Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
First District David Hamm.
Here.
Second District Ronald Brewer.
Here.
Third District Charlie Brown.
Here.
Fourth District Peter Linda Mulder.
Present.
Fifth District Kristi and Sid.
Here.
Sixth District Ted Bosky.
Here.
Seventh District Randy and Meyer.
Present.
Great, thank you. At this time, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. May you spend it with friends and family and all your loved ones, and may it be very peaceful. I want to say it now because most of you are no entirely ever here at the end of the meeting. Anyone else have anything they want to say at this time? Okay, all right, moving on.
Motion approved in minutes.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Roll call, please.
Hamm.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Lee Meyer.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Awards and resolutions, Councilman Brewer.
Morning, and I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four dash fifty-five.
Second.
Thank you. I have a resolution for the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. This time I'll have Pastor Morgan give a call. Resolution recognizing the hundredth anniversary of the Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. Whereas Galilee Missionary Baptist Church located at seventeen hundred Madison Street, Gary, Indiana, was organized in September of nineteen twenty-four. And whereas in nineteen thirty, the church had a membership of about fifty persons, and in nineteen thirty-five, the congregation built a larger building in sixteen thirty-two Madison Street. And whereas from nineteen thirty-five to nineteen forty-three, the church membership grew beyond expectations, and in nineteen forty-four, two lots was purchased at fifteen forty-eight through fifteen fifty-five Madison Street. And whereas during nineteen sixty, the church membership increased to over eight hundred. And whereas in twenty twenty-three, Galilee moved into its current location at seventy-one oh four Holman Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. And whereas throughout its hundred year, the church organization organized a missionary society, senior choir, held New Year's fellowship service, a radio broadcast entity, the House of Hope, a Boy Scout troop, a scholarship program, women's and men's retreat, various ministries was launched to provide for the growth of the church that included a computer resource evangelistic worship. Now therefore, let it be resolved as follows. The Lake County Council wished to recognize Galilee Missionary Baptist Church on this occasion of its hundred year anniversary and look forward to the next hundred year. So let it be resolved this tenth day of December twenty-fourth. The entire county council recognize this resolution.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Being that there's a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Congratulations. And thank you for all you do for the community, all the contributions you've made. Thank you.
I can't see Carrie, so Carrie can't see me.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Okay. Stacey?
Yes, first I want to. Thanks to Carol Cody, a member of our church, for bringing this historical celebration to the attention of the council. And thank you, Lake County Council, for giving us a few moments of recognition and for this plaque that we will proudly and graciously display in our new edifice. Thank you.
All right. Yeah.
Madam President.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty-four fifty-six. It's a resolution honoring the Lake Central High School Varsity Cheerleaders, twenty twenty-four Indiana cheer champions, the large timeout division.
Second.
Lee is here.
Yep.
Lee.
I'm down over there.
Was there a second? Oh, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
On behalf of the cheerleading squad, team, wherever we belong, the team. Lee is here, she's the proud mother of one of the champion, state champions. So people accept this on their behalf because they're hardworking, getting ready for exams and everything else. So they couldn't be here with us today. But this is a resolution honoring the Lake Central High School Varsity Cheerleaders, twenty twenty-four Indiana cheer champions, large timeout division. Whereas students and professional athletes nurtured and trained in Lake County, Indiana, have consistently shown excellence in all sporting endeavors, and Lake County has generously sent forth its spirited and athletic youth to compete with other youths of this state and of every country and nation of this world. Lake County is justly proud of its sons and daughters who have so willingly taken upon themselves the hardships and disciplines, both physical and mental, which successful participation in sporting events demands. And the Lake Central High School Varsity Cheerleaders captured the twenty twenty-four Indiana cheer championship in the large timeout division at Newcastle High School on November nine, twenty twenty-four. Additionally, varsity cheerleaders Matty Biggerstaff, Autumn Garcia, and Peyton Morris were named to the Indiana All-State Cheer Team. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Lake County Council and all citizens of Lake County who are represented by this august body extend congratulations and praise to the students, teachers, coaches, and trainers, but most particularly to the young women of the Lake Central High School Varsity Cheerleaders, the twenty twenty-four Indiana cheer champions in the large timeout division, and champions always for Lake County. The Lake County Council extends congratulations and praise to varsity cheerleaders Matty Biggerstaff, Autumn Garcia, and Peyton Morris for being selected to the Indiana All-State Cheer Team. That a copy of this resolution be spread on the official records of the Lake County Council and an official copy be delivered to the Lake Central High School Varsity Cheerleaders.
Yeah, we voted for.
I don't have a lot to say, I just wanted to say thank you. The girls work really hard. When my daughter first tried out for cheer as a middle school student, I thought, okay, shared a few games, that's it. They work year round, they cheer at games, but they compete, they're real athletes, and they work hard and they do a really good job. So I'm really excited for them, and they're going to Nationals in Florida in February, so.
Are you going?
Yes.
Grandpa Larry going?
But so thank you very much, they appreciate this on their behalf. I'm very happy to accept it, thank you.
Congratulations. Any other councilmen have? Oh, well, let them.
Much worse.
Some acknowledgements, thank you. Okay, any council members have any one they want to acknowledge? Announcements? Oh, go ahead.
We in Gary lost a very prominent young lady, Charlotte Wright, who was a teacher in the Gary school system and a principal at one point. She died suddenly on Saturday, and I just wish condolences to her family, her daughter in particular, over her sudden passing.
Madam President.
Yes.
I want to echo and condolences also to Councilman Proto, who lost his sister in a tragic car accident. Just want to send our prayers and condolences to his family. She will be funeralized this Saturday at New Friendship Missionary Baptist Church. So just want to send our prayers out to, well, former Councilman Proto, he's now on the county township board. I want to send our prayers out to him and his family. Thank you.
And we'll have Carol send letters on behalf of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, our condolences. Any announcements? We have the twenty twenty-five regular meeting and study session dates. I don't think we have to vote on that, we just have to send that notice to the media. Okay.
Just for, if it needs to be part of the minutes, I don't mind making a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do have an announcement. I'm happy to report that the State Board of Accounts was, did our audit, and although there were some findings, that the Lake County is now auditable. They have removed the status of an audible, so I want to thank all who made that possible. I know you had a big part in it, Scott, and of course, Treasurer's Office, Auditor's Office, so thank you, thank you. All right, Lake County Auditor.
No action.
Okay. Moving on, Coroner's Office.
We have transfer, make a motion to approve transfer in general fund from six one one five zero paraprofessionals to six four four nine zero other equipment. Seventy-five thousand is the total transfer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Madam Chair, like to make a motion for Saint John Township Assessors' Office, a transfer from the general fund from postage sixty-three two twenty to sixty-two three ninety, other repair and services of a thousand dollars total.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, Criminal Courts, Department thirty oh two, a move for approval of a transfer in the general fund from six one one three zero technicians, seventeen hundred dollars. Six one one four zero protective services, sixteen hundred dollars. Six two one one zero office supplies, forty-five hundred dollars. Six two two three zero clothing, three hundred dollars. Six three two three one travel registration, one thousand dollars. Six three two three two travel meals, one thousand dollars. Six three two three three traveling lodging, thirty-five hundred dollars. Six three two three five travel mileage, two thousand dollar. Did I skip?
Nope.
Got them all?
The travel, trans, other.
That's what I thought. Yes, six three two three four travel, transportation, and other, one thousand dollars. Two, six three one nine zero other professional services, ten thousand five hundred dollars. Six three two nine zero other communication, transportation, forty-five hundred dollars. And six three nine two zero food and lodging, sixteen hundred dollars. For a total transfer of sixteen thousand six hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Before we move on, I need to make a note that we cannot vote on any appropriations. There was an average, the times wasn't advertised, is that correct Jasmine? It wasn't advertised?
Right.
So if you have an appropriation on the agenda, it's going to have to be deferred till the January meeting.
Should we? Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if we should look at this, if there's anything.
I think.
Advertise it, maybe have a special meeting, I didn't really pay attention. If there's anything, you know, critical that needs to be voted on, maybe we should advertise it and come in on a special meeting between now and then. If it needs it, I would just make a suggestion to look at it, if we have to, we have to, you know.
Yeah, well, we'll take a look, because I know sometimes, or because it's at the end of the year, I'm not sure. Sometimes they allow the funds to go in the red, and then they, then, you know, they make them full, make them whole, so.
And Madam President.
Yes.
I know there were some things from the Sheriff Department, we can always come back and get ratified also if they spend the dollars. If, I don't think anyone really had any major, you know, concerns inside for study session about what they had going on.
They're just transfers.
Yeah, they're just transfers.
Okay.
Yeah, it's only, it's only.
Thousand to the courthouse.
Yeah, that's the only one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Differrals to any appropriations to regions.
Postponements?
Postponements to the next available meeting. Sorry.
To January fourteenth. All right.
Just deferred to fourteenth, or should I make the motion if we decide if it's critical to the next available meeting? Are there two weeks?
I don't know that there'd be time to get a special.
Yeah.
Next meeting, gotcha. I can go, I'll go tell the man just to make sure it's an issue on the court houses.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Fairgrounds also had an appropriation of a non-reverting fund.
Fairgrounds also, okay. Eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. We'll have to see, if we have to have a special meeting, we can, well, we'll do our best at least to get a forum. All right, moving on, cooperative extension services.
Madam President, I move for a transfer in the general fund for the cooperative extension service from six three seven one zero equipment rentals, one hundred dollars, to six one two one zero longevity deduction, one hundred dollars, for a total of one hundred dollars.
Sure, motion's been made and seconded.
I never have.
Discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Planning Commission. Councilman De Meyer. Or is that you? I'm sorry.
Madam President, move to approve an ordinance, ordinance number two five eight two, Eagle Rock Land Company LLC, owner Longspur Energy Storage LLC, petitioner eleven twenty twenty-four, zoning change from A one to C D D, had received a favorable recommendation, nine zero.
Second.
Discussion. Been made and seconded.
This was fully vetted over a long period of time at the planning commission level and has unanimous support of the planning commission. The petitioner did an excellent job of being detailed and prepared, so thank you.
Yes, and we understand that there's been an MOU with union labor, so that's a good thing, that's a great thing. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, sign, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Lee Meyer.
Yes.
Hamm.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. All right, Lake County Sheriff.
Madam President. Request for a transfer from the general fund one zero zero one from six one one four zero protective services of forty thousand dollars. Six two 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 zero garage and motors, twenty thousand dollars. Six three two four zero telephones, forty thousand dollars. And six three six three zero maintenance services, thirty-two thousand dollars. Transfer all of that to line six one one zero zero overtime, forty thousand dollars. Six two two one zero patrol products, forty thousand dollars. Six three nine one zero dues and subscriptions, forty-two thousand dollars, for a total of.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
For a total of one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
A grant application has been requested and the grant approved. From the Grant Oversight Committee, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Vote Safety, Financial Systems. And the Department of Natural Resources, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Marine Patrol Assistance. I still move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
I have to attend this for a moment, Madam President. I've been likely easing the prosecutor's office because the prosecutor doesn't visit us anymore.
No, he does.
Yes.
I need to point out that that also holds true for the sheriff. It holds true for the auditor, it holds true for the treasurer. I can remember when I joined this august body, that all of the elected officials appeared at the council meeting. In fact, there used to be a lineup out there, we had a system of having to sign in so they could be high up on the list of testifying. But now there's a big drop off with the attendance of officials that attend our council meetings. And I want to apologize for Mr. Carter and the prosecutor's office for picking on them when the same thing holds true for other office holders. I rest my case, I saw hope, we will start the new year off properly and with the attendance of other office holders here at the county council meetings. The jail, it will be responsible for transfer from general fund one zero zero one from line item six one one zero one overtime regular, forty-five thousand dollars. Six two one one zero office supplies, fifty thousand dollars. Six two two six zero jail inmate clothing allowance, forty thousand dollars. One zero office supplies, forty thousand dollars. Six three one two two medical deduct, deductible, thirty-five thousand dollars. Six three one four five legal services, twenty thousand dollars. Six three one eight eight employment testing, thirty thousand dollars. Six three one nine zero other professional services. Ten thousand dollars. And six four four nine zero other equipment, fifteen thousand dollars. All of that transferred to six one one zero zero overtime, thirty thousand dollars. Six one one nine zero part-time, fifteen thousand dollars. Six two two five zero healthcare and lab supplies, two hundred thousand dollars. Six three nine two zero food and lodging, twenty thousand dollars. For a total of two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Animal control. Request for a transfer in the general fund from line item six one one zero zero overtime, five thousand dollars. Six one 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 zero officials and administrators, seventeen thousand dollars. Six one one five zero paraprofessionals, one thousand dollars. All being transferred to six one one nine zero. Six thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. Six one two eight zero feasible employees, sixteen thousand one two six dollars. Twenty-three thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Prosecutor.
No.
No, juvenile detention, ordinance. Second, two readings.
An ordinance creating the Lake County Superior Court, Juvenile Division, Juvenile Mental Health Court, Problem Solving Court Grant Fund, a non-reverting fund. I still move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Lee Meyer.
Yes.
Hamm.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Motion to suspend.
Motion's been made to suspend.
Second.
And it's been seconded, roll call, please.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Lee Meyer.
Yes.
Hamm.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Carol.
Approve on second reading?
I'm sorry, I'm moved to approve second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made to approve on second reading, discussion, roll call, please.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Lee Meyer.
Yes.
Hamm.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all.
That's happy to hear you.
Tell the judge we said hi.
Tell we want to see him here next month. Prosecutor, four D.
Four time wait.
Assuming he's not coming. No, just you?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to ask. Madam President, move to approve a transfer in the general fund for the prosecutor four D from six one one five zero paraprofessionals, twelve thousand three hundred dollars, to six one two one zero longevity deduction, three hundred dollars, and six three two two zero postage, the amount of twelve thousand dollars, for a total of twelve thousand dollars, three hundred.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Fairgrounds.
Madam President, first item here is an appropriation, so obviously I'd make a motion to defer that to the next meeting in.
January fourteenth.
Yeah, January fourteenth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to defer to January fourteenth, in discussion. In discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Hey, next item is I make a motion to approve a transfer from the General Fund from 62240 Household and Institutional Supplies, $2,000. 6222, 62210 Petroleum Products, $100. 63620 Equipment Repair, $3,000. 61280 Seasonal Employees, $5,900.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Next we have a I make a motion to approve a transfer of the non-reverting fund 1131 from 63620 Equipment Repair, $1,000. 64310 Improvements, $1,236.38 to seasonal employees, $2,078, and FICA, $158.38, for a total of $2,236.38.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve a resolution to approve temporary loan not to exceed $1 million from Lake County Parks and Recreation Board's Bond Fund, number 4354, Bond Fund number 4353, and Non-Reverting Land Fund number 1116 to the Lake County Parks and Recreation Board Operating Fund, Fund Number 1107, and Non-Reverting Operating Fund Number 1117.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion. Did you, were you able to look into that language of those bond issuance?
I did, I did, yeah. And it's pretty basic. It just basically says by ordinance or resolution that permits the transfer prescribed amount for a prescribed period to a fund for cash flow purposes is the way it's worded.
Do we have the prescribed period of time?
Yes, we do. It's one year. Or it's the fiscal year.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
No other discussion?
Roll call, please.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown? Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bill Ski?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Next item, make a motion to approve a grant application and grant approval from the Grant Oversight Committee. Number one is U.S. Department of Commerce, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, Coastal Zone Management Program, ALN 11.419, Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Division of Nature Preserves, fiscal year 2025, Lake Michigan Coastal Program, Land Acquisition Category, Grant Application Number One.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion to approve a grant application of U.S. Department of Commerce, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, Coastal Zone Management Program, ALN 11.419, Indiana Department of Natural Resources, Division of Nature Preserves, fiscal year 2025, Lake Michigan Coastal Program, Land Acquisition Category, Grant Application Number Two.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion to approve a grant application, Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission, grant application for acquisition of property.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much and happy holidays.
Thank you. Emergency Management.
Madam President, Emergency Management is requesting a grant application and grant approval for, from the Grant Oversight Committee. NSCO gives back local grants, fiscal year 2024, safety grant application. So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Madam President, Commissioners have a request in for a transfer, E911 Operating Fund 1014 from 61340 Group Insurance Deduction of $350,000 to 63995 Other Services and Charges, the full amount of $350,000, a total of $350,000. And may I put a pin in this, Madam President? I just admonished many of the departments and elected officials for not making an appearance here and hoping that that would improve in 2025, but I want to not include the Commissioners in there because they threw us out of their meeting room here. So I will the Commissioners from that
At least their department heads do show up.
Well, it means you can leave if you want. You don't have to stick around. You said you don't.
Well, I didn't come earlier. The technology allows me to be right over there. It's like when somebody says, hey, you're getting close. Most testing.
So move on the Commissioners' request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays. Health Department. Oh, that's good job. Item B.
Madam President, the Lake County Health Department, Department of Local Public Health Services Fund 1161 is the request for a certified medical assistant that is not currently in the budget. And the proposed salary is $42,750,000. So there's no difference in the two. This is request for a new, a new position in the Health Department.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
If I could, if the study session was discussed that this is part of the it would need to wait until the budget's certified, correct? So this should, this should be deferred.
Oh, we do?
That's what we were
I thought this was a part-time employee that they were moving to full-time and it's not the General Fund, so we could move ahead with it. That was my understanding.
It'll have to be done again.
So that
It might, Scott, if we do it, all the action we can take today, then we'll have to do it all over.
Okay, I didn't know that it was specifically, well, it is at the end of the year, so I don't know when she was planning to place that person in that position. But, okay. Okay.
I thought we'd just create the position now so they could hire the person, then we just have to do it again to put it in next year.
Yeah.
If they want to pay the position.
But either way, it doesn't matter. We just got to do, if we do it today, we got to do it again in January.
I would say just do it now so they can fill the position.
Yeah.
And Nick gave a pretty detailed explanation of it, that of what this was, was being transferred into this spot. It's, it actually made some sense. I love to ask Nick questions. I'll miss him when he's gone.
Madam President, I move for the adoption of the new position of Certified Medical Assistant in the
Yeah.
Health Department.
Second.
At a salary of $42,750,000.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
I think as we go forward here, you know, this Health First Indiana Fund that was created as Senate Enrolled Act Four, I think it was. There are so many moving parts to this. We're going to have to, you know, the people on this Budget Committee will need to keep a keen eye on measurables. Part of that law was also certain measurables as it related to public health and utilizing those positions to gain those measurables, so whenever an entity of government dumps a bunch of money into the lap of another government entity, it many times creates a lack of accountability and oversight. So we're going to have to really be keenly aware of how we're managing this because there is a chance that in this budget session or forthcoming budgets, budget sessions, this may or may not be renewed. So it's important that we keep track of all the measurables.
That's portable carrying.
Okay, any further discussion? Yeah, I, I Okay, is something, Councilman Bill Ski? No?
I got a lot, but I'm going to keep it to myself.
Okay, all right. Roll call, please.
Pam?
Sure.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bill Ski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
See it.
Sure. Yes.
Why not? Why not? Very informal.
Economic Development.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, go ahead.
Economic Development and Orderance Establishing the Lake County Community Economic Development Department, Departments, Community Development Block Grant Projects Fund, a non-reverting fund. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bill Ski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
See it.
Yes, motion passes seven zero on first reading.
I move for a second reading adoption of the
Suspension first?
I'm sorry, suspension of rules.
Second.
I move for the establishing the Lake County
Motion's been made to suspend with the rules that seconded. Roll call, please.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bill Ski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
See it. Yes, motion passes seven zero. Now second reading.
I move for the adoption on second reading, the ordinance establishing the Lake County Community Economic Development Departments, Community Development Block Grant Projects Fund, a non-reverting fund.
Easy for you to get.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bill Ski?
Yes.
Lee Meyer?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
See it. Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you very much. I didn't suggest the title, by the way.
Hey, Hammond and Gary Courthouses.
This is an appropriation.
Yeah, Mike, I mean Commissioner repay, we can't approve the appropriation. I don't know if you heard about
I did, I did hear that. So I, and I don't know, as I sit here, somebody asked me like, oh, was that going to make a big? I'm like, I don't know. So I don't want to force a meeting that's not required. So we'll investigate. The remaining transfer also relates to utilities. Basically, it's bills that are, you know, due and owing that we'd like to pay before the end of the year. So if you see the lights flicker or something, then then we needed the honey. If not, we're okay.
Blames of times, and Dan is inconspicuous.
He's on Oh, careful, yeah. I didn't say that. That was anyways, I would appreciate the transfer on the, on 23B.
Okay, Councilman Brown.
So move the transfer from 80 Service Maintenance, $100,000. 63240 Telephones, $130,000. Transfer both to 63510 Utilities, $230,000. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Government Center.
We have to move to
Oh, yeah, we want to, we need a deferment, Councilman Brown, on 23A.
I'm sorry. You mean what?
A deferment on the appropriation, 23A.
Oh.
Move to defer this, the request for an appropriation of 63510 Utilities, $100,000. So move.
To January fourteenth.
To January fourteenth.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now, yeah, go ahead.
Government Center requests for a transfer from the General Fund from line 61170 Skilled Prep Workers, $6,000. 61180 Service/Maintenance, $50,000. To, both of those, to 61190 Part-Time, $56,000 total. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Again, need a deferment on the appropriation.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I move for deferment, the appropriation to the January 12th or 14th. Yeah.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
And, okay, deferment on the appropriation. Lake County 911 Fund, January fourteenth. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay. Transfer? This is Councilman Ham.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of transfer in the General Fund from 63120 Medical and Hospital Services, in the amount of $36,000, to 63150 Consultant Fees, in the same amount.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of a transfer in Fund 1196 from 63420 Insurance, $500,000, to 63190 Other Professional Services, $500,000.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
What, what was this for again? It's a Other Professional Services line item. It's a contractual work for IT software implementation integration. Basically, they were able to do some work that they're supposed to do in '25 and '24 so we could pay them out. '24 is money instead of '25.
What, what created the surplus in insurance?
Oh, that's a good question. Healthy employees. And low liability.
We could budget insurance there just in case we run short towards the end of the year.
Okay. You know.
Thanks. Have you been to the eye doctor?
You can only go, you can only go every two years.
I didn't hear that. Actually, I don't know if you cover, I don't know if you cover hearing.
There's a lot of savings with vacancies, positions, you're saving on healthcare there too. So there's a lot of
Everybody knock on.
I removed all my house. I don't have
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I was drew the Commissioners from the request of an appearance at our meetings. You wouldn't have seriously considered kicking us out of your meeting.
Kick, no, absolutely. I didn't, but just incidentally, I did not hear your comment. I had planned at every moment to be here. And I literally had a 9:30 and I asked somebody to keep an eye on the WebEx and I said, can you let me know when Parks is up? Because I figured after Parks, I would be up soon after. So I was here anyways and I was going to be here anyways and I'm happy to be here.
Just for clarification.
Yes, thank you for that.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of a resolution to approve the transfer of $96,546.46 from 2022-2 Lake County Local Roads and Bridges Matching Grant Fund, 9444, to Ceded Fund Number 4012.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
County Council. Councilman Ham?
Work with me. Do I make an announcement?
You get to open up for public.
Yeah, yep.
Uh. I've requested open up public hearing on proposed additional appropriations for the Lake Ridge Fire Protection District for the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Second.
Motion's been made a second to open up for public hearing.
If.
Is it public?
Yeah, we really, this notice didn't get published either.
Oh, no, okay, so deferment.
See you next year? Boy, is this is a good question, this isn't gonna affect anything with the fire truck or anything, cause.
We don't necessarily care how our trucks that we need money for, we have money, however, it is a. Oversteer the highway, my bucket. We have to come here for the different programs. So it's, we add them on the. Each hour, the crew is.
I guess my point is, is that will you be able to make the appropriation, get the truck fixed, and then we approve it in January at the next meeting? Well, I don't have that authority, but the president and the, and the, and the attorney can advise on that.
So is it, is it a transfer into the, into the four hundred series that we could take from someplace else?
No, this is, they're not even in our system.
Yeah, they're not. They would just have to get, uh, let whoever's going to fix their truck, that the money's coming. It's just a matter, I don't know.
Checks into mail and I'll fix it in the morning.
Emergency, it's an emergency fix, right? I mean, you, you, the, it's not working, it's not in operation.
Who's suing the rebuild on the engine?
Still do business with.
Let me just do the P O for the, the P O lecture.
Maybe it'll be cool, otherwise, do we need the schedule and come in here to make sure, and we can't leave it. I'll do whatever you guys want.
I mean, you could still create the P O. And as long as they have a P O.
Well, usually, these repairs are net thirty days on pay for engine rebuilds, so.
We should make it, right?
Yeah.
It's usually a net thirty. From my experience with. Diesel mechanics is, usually it's a net thirty.
So to clarify. We have the money. To fix it.
Right, but you need the money.
We just need your approval. To take it and add it to my Q fund budget. So I don't need that money or nothing, I just need approval.
And we, and we can't give that because the appropriation of that, even though you're there, it's an additional appropriation, you know, it's within your budget, was not advertised, so therefore. Uh, because of a glitch with the times, we can't make any appropriations or, so.
So can I get it fixed?
Get it fixed.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll sort it out later.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I.
No, get it fixed.
You gotta fix it.
Is that, is that an ambulance rig or rescue vehicle?
Yeah, I'd say get it fixed.
Do we vote on the deferment?
No.
Okay, so we had a second, correct?
Second.
All in favors, uh, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Ordinance.
It's twenty-six B one is the same, it's the ordinance.
Oh, it's the ordinance, so we need a deferment on that.
Motion to defer until January fifteenth.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to defer the ordinance for the Cumulonaut Fire Fund of Lake Ridge appropriation. Um, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, Lake County Part-Time Employees Pay Rate Ordinance for twenty-twenty-five, Councilman Ham?
Are these, this is ready?
Yeah.
Well, it hasn't been changed since the study session.
It, it. It is. We've added what we've, what we've voted on and approved since our second reading.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of an ordinance. Approving the Lake County Part-Time Employees Ratings Three ordinance for twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for suspicion, suspension of the rules, all in favors, uh, roll call, please.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero for suspension.
Move approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval on second reading, discussion. Roll call, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Has the mileage rate been established?
Motion to defer till the fourteenth.
Motion's been made seconded and seconded for deferment. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven zero.
Is, is this ready, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve ordinance concerning the holiday schedule for the calendar year of twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Madam President?
Yes.
Did we ever sort out, um. I haven't put it up here, about the extra day that we was considering, um, in discussion about the twenty-sixth. Of twenty-twenty-five of December.
Well, in my opinion, I mean, the Wednesday and Thursday. Um, are the scheduled holidays and we resume business at the county on Friday.
Agreed.
Do you think there'd be an interest? That's the only thing I brought up was to, maybe we take that, instead of having, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, come back Friday, maybe we work on. Wednesday and you have Thursday, Friday off, is all I was saying, is to try to give the folks a better break, but. If the consensus is to stay with as presented, um, I mean, I think it just warrants some talk, so at least we can let the rank and file membership know we've. Taken everything into consideration.
Yeah, I think most folks would rather have Christmas Eve off than that Friday. I know it's a longer weekend, but I think Christmas Eve. Um, is a day where you, you, some families, they are preparing for the holiday, they're having Christmas Eve dinner and. You know, last minute shopping for some folks that I know, especially men's Christmas Eve. Shopping, so. You know, so, yeah, I, I, I think they would prefer to have Christmas Eve off. Hope that, don't take that as, but anyways. I'm speaking of my husband, let me put it that way. Okay, so, uh, yeah, if anyone have any else, any other comments on that? Okay, roll call, please. Oh, sorry, did you? Okay.
Thought to be disagreeable, but I agreed with. My colleague here, Ted.
Um, yeah.
But, before we vote, is there any other interest? If not, I think either one of us in the Wester Town.
I, I'm for it, um, I, I think, you know, the extra day, you know, I think people work hard all year round. I think that's one incentive that we could give back to the working class, people who is. Lake County, uh, giving the extra day off.
I'm not opposed to that, but my comment was, you know, we do provide service to the public and I think that there are other people who are off during that time that. You know, that may be a time they could come in and do the work that they need to do with the county, so I think we also owe it to the citizens. Uh, to be open, you know, when we should be, in my opinion.
Well, let's, uh, let's see what happens, um.
So you're, you're suggesting Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off?
Right, and then obviously they'd have the weekend off on their own. So.
Are you suggesting, give up any other holiday that year?
No, I'm, I'm, my amendment, my amendment would be. Madam Chair, my amendment would be to include.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, or you're just, you're just discussing. Oh, okay.
Now I have an amendment to. To include the twenty-sixth as well. Of December. Off.
Okay, so you're amending your motion in that motion now needs a second.
My motion didn't have a second.
I second. And I second the amendment.
Okay.
I think that, I'm confused a little bit myself right now.
We do this on an annual basis.
Right.
Now that the amendment, I've offered it, but we do this on an annual basis, so it's not like this is forever. It's because of the way the schedule falls, uh. I'm in favor of, yeah, they'd have five days, so maybe they wanna leave town or do something. I agree with. I bring Ron here, they work hard all year.
They do, but, and, and I agree, we, we have multiple holidays, we, we are very generous to our employees. And not only that, we've been very generous to them financially and we can't just consider the employees, we have to consider the public as well. So I believe Wednesday and Thursday and you come back to work on Friday, that's, that's my feelings. So, okay, you have a motion on the floor.
There's a motion and there's a.
And an amendment to the.
I have the twenty-sixth.
Councilman Bowsky, did you wanna?
I, I seconded the, the amendment.
Okay.
And just to say that, I don't know the, I don't know the answers, it's valid points that both you and Councilman Linderman, Linderman brought up. Yeah, that was easy for me to say.
Okay, so we are voting.
I, I do understand what we're voting, but I just wanted to say that. I'm not sure what cost savings there is also by, when the building is shut down for three, that means that heating, cooling. And lighting is all shut down into a minimus here, so. Um, and how many people are gonna come the day after Christmas and man, this is a perfect time for me to leave home and come take care of business at the government center on that Friday after Christmas? I don't know that answer to that question, so.
Yeah, and I don't know.
Appreciate Dave bringing it up, will they throw a vote out there?
Well, and people can, I mean, you can also take a vacation day.
Yeah.
Yeah, our personal, you have plenty of those.
I just hate to have they forcing people to.
All of the above, right?
You know, lie and take a sick day.
Me and Linda was lost, I thought I'd offer an amendment, that's why I haven't.
And I don't know if the whole building shuts down when we're not here, I don't, I don't know that either, I don't know if it creates an additional holiday pay for someone.
Well, water conservation, lighting, everything adds up, I mean, if we're gonna scrutinize it, scrutinize it all the way, I guess.
Okay, uh, so there is a, the vote is on the amendment to approve. Uh, the ordinance with, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, that's the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. And twenty-sixth of December, twenty-twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay, that's, we're voting on the amendment.
So this is just the amendment.
This is just the amendment. Okay, any further discussion?
President?
Yes.
Think it would be wiser for us to get the building supervisor. Those folk that are directly involved. I mean, it would be crazy to say that we approve giving the extra day, not knowing the impact on other. People.
Yeah, we don't know if the courts have scheduled hearings for that day, of course, they can, they can cancel them.
Over a year, no.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, roll call on the amendment of December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Brown?
No.
Linda Mulder?
No.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
No.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Seid?
No, motion fails. Okay, now back to your original motion. The original motion was order, uh, ordinance concerning the holiday schedule as presented, so. Uh, that's, that was seconded as well, right? Okay, alright, so now we vote on that. Roll call, please.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes on first reading.
Motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
Motion's been made to suspend, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
No, sorry, roll call.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yeah.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes. Seven zero.
Madam Chair, move for approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made on second reading. Discussion. I will add that it, it was very nice gesture. But, you know, it wasn't, it, it's a nice gesture. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please, second reading.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of an ordinance amending ordinance number fourteen fifty-nine C. The ordinance declaring funds dormant and repealing and rescinding. The ordinance establishing the funds.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ham?
Yes.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?
Yes.
Bowsky?
Yes.
Niemeyer?
Yes.
Seid?
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend with the rules. Roll call, please.
Brewer?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Linda Mulder?[1538.04]
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Move for approval on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for approval on second reading. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, move for approval of a resolution to approve transfers to self.
Sorry, there's one. One ordinance that's got, got added.
Got added?
Yeah, I'm sorry, got added after the study session.
All right.
It's on the community, uh, the corrections board.
The merit.
The merit system.
Oh, you just don't have that on your agenda?
It's not, it wasn't on the one from the study session.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, making motion to approve ordinance number twenty six B six, ordinance amending the ordinance establishing a merit system board for the Lake County Correction Division, ordinance number one three two two C as in Charlie.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. What is the change?
Okay, the, this is just so we're aware, we got a request from the attorney for the, uh, community, uh, for the county corrections merit board, uh, to change the, the, um, it it originally was at ten days after the service of the summons. They had to get the transcript. Now the new ordinance says within thirty days after the bond is required by section E of the ordinance is posted, then they all have to give the transcript. It was, the ten day limit was, was difficult for them to comply with. This ordinance was established after the Jensen decree back in two thousand and ten and it's a creature of ordinance, unlike the sheriff's merit board, which is a creature statute. So we can change, we couldn't change this. The statute of the merit board says it's ten days for the sheriff's department. Uh, corrections board, it's gonna be thirty days under this ordinance. That's the change.
So the merit board says ten days.
The ordinance right now says ten days, yes.
Okay, oh, we want to change it to thirty days.
After they, thirty days after they post their bond.
What happens, you have to explain this a little more to me. What happens thirty days after they place their bond?
The, the, the county is obligated to provide the transcript to the, to the correctional officer that's being disciplined. The turnaround, but there's a case right now that this is the one that triggered this, that's, there's a five day hearing. So to get served with the summons and be able to generate that transcript in, in ten days was, was very expensive because you have to pay expedited fees and, um, so to to alleviate that concern, they, they wanted to expand it to a thirty day, uh, to get the transcript prepared.
Right, Madam President?
Yes.
How many other boards could this impact if they now want the thirty days versus the?
Well, none that I'm aware of, um, because this merit, sheriff's merit board is by statute and we couldn't amend that one.
So how does this affect the, the correctional officer? I mean.
It just, just changes their ability to, it just, it's gonna extend the timeout. You have to get the transcript. An additional twenty days after they pay the bond, post the bond.
Let's see, so this is.
Would you like to have, um, the attorney for the board come and explain the concerns that were raised by this, this, uh, case that just went on in the jail? We could do that next month, too.
Yeah, there's no urgency. Maybe we should, uh, defer this.
Well, can't we just do one reading, Madam Chair? Since we already have a motion and a second, it's on the table, we just do one reading and then, uh, have it on the agenda for next month and we can amend it any way, shape or form or take no action and it comes on.
So.
Who's the maker of the motion? Oh, Dick.
I'll withdraw the motions.
That makes it easier. I'll just withdraw the motion to approve.
Does anyone else have any, um?
Could the attorney attend the study session so we could only vet this?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, so there's, are you, the motion's been withdrawn. Is there a motion for a deferment?
Motion to defer until January fourteenth of twenty five.
Motion's, motion's been made and seconded for deferment. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes seven zero. Resolution.
Move for approval of a resolution to approve transfers to self-insurance non-reverting liability fund forty five forty one group insurance non-reverting cruel fund um, out of the general fund nine 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 dash two six five one four and jail inmate medical non-reverting fund forty four fourteen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yeah.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. All right, uh, contracts and agreements.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the executive employment agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
I guess so.
I'll go with a sure.
Yes, motion passes. What? Six, yes, one sure, okay.
Yeah, I guess so in there, too.
Uh, Law Office of Thomas O'Donnell.
Move for approval of the Law Office of Thomas O'Donnell, uh, contract.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
I guess so.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Law Office of Ray Zarmak.
For approval of the contract from the office of Ray Zarmak.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
Plus a good name.
I'm good.
It's done.
I'm out, man.
Bad timing, Tom. Roll call, please.
Pam.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
I'll be back, yeah. It's overwhelming.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Goodness.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Thought you left after.
Yes, motion passed seven zero. Yeah, I was like, okay, I'm done. Uh, Law Office of, uh, Shayna Levinson.
Madam Chair, move for approval of the contract from Shayna Levinson.
Second.
Thank you for correcting.
I didn't call you out on it, I guess.
I know, but thank you. Roll call, uh, discussion. Roll call, please.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Yes, motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chair, move for approval of the contract from Linda Garcia Marvala.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Brown.
Yes.
Linda Mulder.
Yes.
Bill Ski.
Yes.
Neemeyer.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes.
Brewer.
Yes.
C. Ed.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Okay, appointments. I now open up nominations for the Sid Garner Scholarship Committee, two members from the Lake County Council.
I nominate, um, Madam Chair, Council Lady Sid and Councilman, uh, Linda Mulder. Both. No need to.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I hear now, uh, appoint, uh, hereby certify that. Got the right wording, but anyways, uh, Sid and Linda Mulder to the Sid Garner Scholarship Committee. Northwest, I now open nominations for the Northwest Indiana Community Action Corporation.
I nominate Councilman Linda Mulder.
You have to also say Tim Brown is my proxy.
Yeah.
And and Tim Brown is, uh, Councilman's proxy.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I hereby appoint, uh, Councilman Linda Mulder and Tim Brown as his proxy.
Your ambitions appreciated, Pete.
You know, I do what I can.
All right, I now open up nominations for the combined councilmatic and citizen appointment for the Lake County Redevelopment Commission.
Madam Chair, I nominate Council Lady Sid and John Brezak.
Are there any other nominations?
Hearing. The one that was discussion about the frequency of the meetings. Commission.
No.
I thought we had some discussion about, they don't even meet.
No, they do meet regularly. Yeah, I sit on the, I sit on the board.
That's exactly what I was.
Yes.
From that was the, the one that, uh, Gene, um, that just had, Gene Moore that just passed way recently, he was on and that was the one we had confusion on the meeting times and it was kind of inactive. Same, same type of title, just Marvel instead of us.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no other nominations and now appoint, uh, Salv, Constable Sid and John Brezak to the Lake County Redevelopment Commission. Now open up nominations for the Contractors Licensing Board. Member must be Havoc Industry.
I don't have a name with that.
You don't have a name?
Jesse Rippey. Jesse Rippey's the.
Oh, yeah, Jesse.
But they're, just, uh, nominate Jesse Rippey.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Jesse Rippey is now appointed to, to the Contractors Licensing Board. County Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. The two members are to be appointed. Um, just keep in mind that the, you can. We have to make a motion first to, um, waive the requirements of the level one because one of the members that I believe may be nominated is not a.
Okay, Madam Chairman, just real quick, that it it just one of the two has to be a level two or three appraiser.
Oh.
So according to our, our notes on it, I, I did not.
Okay.
On this, but that's, that's where current notes reflect is that one must be a level two or a level three appraiser or that's her. And I think Bart still is.
Yes, Bart is. Bart is a level. Yeah, he, he is a level. I think he's a level two. I'm not sure.
So then we're okay?
Yeah, so then we're okay? Okay. All right, I now open nominations for the Pita boa.
Uh, Carly Brandonberg and Kenneth Barxville.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, now appoint Carly, what's his name? Brandon and.
Kenneth Barxville.
Kenneth Barxville. Do the Pita boa. Library boards, um, we did receive a letter from, uh, yeah.
I will, uh, enter into the name, uh, Damon Carpenter.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I now appoint Damon Carpenter to the library boards. You know, in the past, we used to give the terms. Uh, whether it's a two-year, one-year, so. Maybe we consider that next time.
Do you offer public comment, Tom? I might. Can get shut down.
Okay, I know with the library board, um, I'll get with, something has to be sent to the department and the form, yeah. All right, um, anyone have anything they want to add?
They, they did get a letter from.
Yes, yes, yeah, we got a letter from, um, Damon Carpenter. I was saying that we used to put the terms in our motions for the term of one year, two years. Okay, anyone have anything? Public, public comment? Any public comment? None? Oh. Okay, Councilman, anything you'd like to add?
I have something. Um, appreciate the work of the team here this year, the, the whole county council team, uh, elected officials and our staff and our consultants. Um, I think we had a pretty exceptional year. Uh, given some of the difficulties we had last year, uh, we came out of some of those things. I think we're on the right track, uh, continued focus on modernization of our business model as a county government is a good thing for the taxpayers. There's gonna be a lot of changes under a new gubernatorial administration, so there'll be some adjustments to make, but I feel like the foundation we put together here and the work that all of you are doing has been, uh, excellent in assisting us to do our job for the taxpayers, so